Play in for it. You can move into the shares.
Okay, good evening. Six thirty. Call the order meeting number eighteen forty-seven that these ones are planning zoning commission. We are here physically in John Daley meeting room in town hall as well as on the Zoom platform. We have a quorum, we have all our regular members plus one alternate. So Frank, I'd ask you to sit down on any discussions of voting this evening?
Yes.
Thank you. Do we have any adding agenda items? Stephen Adams. Okay. There were no legal notices. So we are at the public participation portion of our meeting. Is there anybody in the audience that has anything they'd like to bring up that is not on tonight's agenda? Hey. Is there anyone online that would like to bring up a topic that is not on tonight's agenda? Yeah, if there is none. Move on to approval of minutes. Regular meeting number eighteen forty-six was held on March fourteenth. Does anybody have any? Alterations, edits, suggestions on the minutes?
I see a typo on line one fifty-two. Jim's last name is spelled in flat letter.
Oh. It's Thurz instead of Thurs.
Any other corrections? There we have it. Not now. I will entertain a motion for approval.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of regular meeting eighteen forty-six. Held Tuesday, March fourteenth, twenty twenty-three. With the correction in line one fifty-two indicating um. It was Jim Thurz. T H U R Z. So replace the A with a Z.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, right there. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Okay, unanimous. There are no other additions to the scene. So moving on to performance bonds, actions, permanent extensions and road acceptance. First item is West River Farms bond reduction request. There is a memo that is just. Given to us this evening. And regards to this. When you want to, I'm going to retain you on it.
Sure. So um phase one is nearing completion. Over at West River Farms, they're moving on to phase two. They have already um submitted bonding. For phase two. And so they're requesting a reduction. To phase one. And they've been working with um between JR Russo and the town engineer to evaluate what's left to be done. Len has recommended and has recommended a reduction to eighty-six thousand dollars to cover maintenance and the temporary cul-de-sac. Who has requested. It's also pointed out just a couple of items that only appear prior to road acceptance.
Does anybody have any questions on this?
Need to go to the.
Right? So do you need any motion to uh approve this?
Say do it.
Okay.
Thanks, folks.
Entertained motion for the uh reduction of the bond?
I'll make a motion to reduce the bond for phase one. To eighty-six thousand dollars to cover the maintenance bond and temporary cul-de-sac. For West River Farms phase, phase one bonding in accordance with the memo dated well, March twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-three from Len Norton.
We have a motion on table. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, right there. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
unanimous. Next one is Charbonneau gravel pit on Paul, carries Paul Road and landscaping bond release.
We um received a request for release once uh gravel pit solar closed down the property. So we did release that farm. Inductiously. Gravel pit solar.
It was gravel pit solar mean to maintain a bond also or?
Um. Not with us. They're working under comment from the state.
Did you know, um come, was the reclamation that was originally planned for the gravel pit, was that done or?
I don't know that it met. The final grades as presented um. However. Gravel pit solar worked in the site and because I know that earthwork for their construction.
Got you.
So although we may not have jurisdiction and may not have a bond. Do we have any ability to deal with the mess they're making on plantation road?
When we just, but we're talking about dirt coming in. Yeah, they've been very good. Actually, they're um. They have a weekly inspection out there. To look, you know, from the, then the natural resource conservation service is actually the one out there weekly. And they provide photo documented reports on areas of concern. So there are some erosion issues out there that the wetlands commission. Is worried about and watching and um. So. They're active and if there are issues, they've been very responsive.
Plantation road does not look to be in very good condition. They've got a lot of truck traffic going on.
Okay. You can reach out to them easily.
Anyone else have any questions? Yeah. They've been wanting to entertain a motion for the release of the bond.
We did.
We said we don't need anything.
Yeah.
Information, right?
Thank you. No more. Hey. We're continued public hearing. We had PZ twenty twenty-three dash two. Uh for one eighty-two prospect hill road that's been requested for a thirty day extension and it has been granted. So that will not be tabled until a meeting of April eleventh. No. New public hearings, no old business, so under new business. First item is PZ twenty twenty-three dash four twenty-eight Abbey Road for a site plan modification for installation of sports field item. The application is B B S C Group. Incorporated this, Sleep Trail Cellar. Who's here to speak on that? Maybe.
Um. Good evening. So our intentions are as to where we went through uh.
Thank.
Oh, thank for the record, Joe Salrauber.
Thank you.
So for um. So what we're doing here is we're we're installing. Light poles for the soccer field. And I've already gone through zoning board of appeals because they're seventy foot tall. They've approved us. So now we're in front of you asking. Your permission to install them. You'll. There is a. On the plans, you'll see for parking lot lighting. Our intentions, our intentions, well. Financially, we're only going to do the four that are up at the top. So basically pull one, two, three and four just for some parking lot lighting. Uh five through twelve was kind of a wish list of the director. And it's not gonna happen. This is, it was a three hundred thousand dollar. Uh grant that um. Representative Foster got us to do this. There were some concerns about hours of operation and. The hours of operation would end between nine and ten o'clock. And we're looking at. Potentially. Two to three times a week, maybe. That might be on the high side. We have a men's league currently there now that plays every Wednesday. And where our intentions are for the high school kids to be able to play under the lights and maybe even the middle school kids uh because middle school sports are back. Uh so that's. It, it's not gonna be a big gen, our revenue generator, you know, it's just. An opportunity for us to light up our premier field, which is a premier field in the area.
Quick question, Joe. You, you mentioned the other poles weren't. Gonna be added. Those are the ones that are going up the driveway, correct?
Yeah, so basically twelve through five are not gonna be put in. Uh we're just looking to get a little bit of light on the top end of the parking lot for the people that are at legions. The lights will be set on a timer and the possible caveat of. The director being able to turn them off wirelessly. Depending on that cost, but most likely it'll be a timer to start. Because we don't have internet up there anyway. But our intentions are to get internet up there and get some cameras up there and a little more security up there.
So with none of the accessway lighting, is it any type of illumination on that accessway at all and?
Not, no. Well, I mean, there, there's the parking lot from scout halls lit all the way up there. There's a floodlight on the end of the barn.
The lights are generally behind the building. This field you're lighting?
It's the field that's all the way to the, way in the back.
Oh, the only reason I'm asking is there's a butters. And I'm just didn't.
This is what you're inviting.
Oh, so it's.
Yes.
You, you got zero all the way up, the whole right side for nobody.
Okay.
Yeah.
There's a um pretty informative, it was written in the who cars pass packet. For the monthly that.
Only one car. That's a one-way.
Yeah.
It's not very wide.
This one shows. I'll go. Just like the heat on the neighbors. Yeah.
This is Musco lighting. This is good stuff. Sort of like the.
I think we did not.
This is something they landed their, it's race track with.
Professional fields.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's, there's only three companies. And Musco is actually uh. Nationwide, yeah. They're. They've, they've done a lot of the preliminarys, we're did a lot of the stuff. They're actually going to install them. They're on one of our uh. They're on the source well bid, so we don't even have to put it out bid. We're pulling them right off. So and they've been great to work with.
There a reason that the certificate of variance is inside? This is right.
This is ZBA, non-sign.
Oh, really? Yeah. It is now.
Oh, okay.
Waiting for the um appeal period. We're gonna put on the land records form. We just came in inside it.
Yeah, and I, I like the uh picture showing why, you know, by going with fall or creates the angle of trajectory lower. Less uh, less light pollution that way.
So it'd be nice to high school when they have their game, they can play over there at night. These are at generators.
Yeah.
Yeah, because we used to pick them up. Yep. And then bring them back.
And let them go play there. For their own company or whatever.
Is that a field setup just for soccer or?
To.
For the next year.
Soccer field.
I see pictures that.
Oh, those are examples of what's. Yeah.
Time frame, what are you looking at?
Well. Once we wait the um. Fifteen day grace period after this. Uh we will probably order the hardware, get everything rolling. Uh sock, there is spring soccer. It should end right around June. I'd like to get them in right after that. Because then when fall starts and high school gets back and soccer season is upon us. We'll be able to have that opportunity.
Availability is not gonna be an issue. Meet that timeframe then?
No, because it's. The company we're going with is actually partly the manufacturer of the, the only thing is the light pole. I think the light poles were twelve weeks out.
Anybody else have any questions?
No.
There's no other question. I guess we'll entertain a motion on this.
Mister Chairman.
Yes.
I understand this is not a public hearing, but I might have an opportunity just to speak for a couple of minutes.
You have something that's pertinent and relevant for this?
I believe so.
And I'll like to speak.
Uh for the record, JR Street, JR Russo and Associates, um. Here representing a neighbor, Windsor Showstable, who owns property across the street from the Abbey Road Fields and the Scott Hall. And they asked me to come and speak on behalf of them. And before I say anything, I just. Would like to say for the record that we're not here because we're opposed to youth sports in the town of East Windsor or in any town for that matter. In fact, they are. Uh supporters of youth sports and so is JR Russo and Associates, but they are. Asking me to come here and speak due to some concerns about. Lighting initially, which I think uh Musco did a very good job of putting forth a uh. Brochure that explained how the lighting works, even though they're seventy foot high poles. I think what they did was a pretty good job and it was a great illustration. Also, you even saw the presentations to what it does. But there is some concern on the part of Windsor Gull about the park being open at night uh and how late at night and how often at night. Uh due to the fact that, and I don't know how many of you are familiar with what they do there, but it's a. Training facility where they train jumpers. Uh they compete nationwide. Uh they've got as high as, as high as the Peonyhead Games. They have won there. Um so it's, it's a very uh, it's a world-class operation and they're concerned about. Noise and, and hours and so on and so forth, and they wanted me to come before you and express that concern. So that's why I'm here. And I know you always take those things into consideration. You talk about hours of operation, frequency and. You know, is it gonna operate every night of the week? Which no, it can't because the field can't sustain that. It's a turf field and, and, and I understand that. I understand that, but. Like Joe just mentioned, two or three nights a week. I'm not sure the fields could stand that. But certainly uh, you know, some occasional games, whether it's, you know, three or four times a month, once a week, twice a month. I don't know what it's gonna be, but. But they had concerns and they were concerned about hours. Uh there was discussion about hours at the zoning board of appeals. It seemed the consensus was that nine PM was probably about as late as it would go. Which seemed reasonable, although uh, you know, the Parks and Rec director, I think Melissa talked about. Ten PM, and I'm not sure what that's gonna be or what, how that's gonna end up, but. I just wanted to, to come before you and espr, you know, express that with a listen concern by a, and a buddy neighbor who's been there. Over thirty years and, and probably most of you know has been very supportive of the scout hall and, and, and youth sports here in town in East Windsor. And I just wanted to.
J V I F, are they, are they in favor, they're not in favor with this sentence? Is that what you're saying?
I, I would say it would be fair to say they're not in favor. The lighting of the field isn't operational of this project in hours.
They're in favor of this project.
Right. So, once again, thank you for your time. I understand it's not a public hearing. Thanks for an opportunity just to express that concern before you.
Well, I'll just. One comment on that is that in the um memo and terms and conditions, it is stated in there, the lights not be on past ten o'clock. So there is, there is an hour restriction.
I, I, I haven't seen the memo, but, but thank you.
There, there is an hour restriction that they have to be off by ten PM. And I would also think with youth sports, you probably don't want to keep youths out very late either. So that's where maybe Melissa was thinking the nine PM maybe more for youth sports and.
Yeah, I think she actually indicated that for the most part, these fields are used by, by the younger kids, you know, in terms of uh, these ones are soccer clubs and so forth. I mean, understanding that high school and you had your homecoming and have a JV game and then a varsity game, but it's, it's likely to go maybe a little past nine o'clock, but. And that's, that's understandable because maybe once or twice a year, and I don't think that's a, a major deal. I just wanted to be able to express the concern to you. Thank you.
And Joe, if I may ask, there'll be no alcohol or anything served at any of these events?
Okay. Anybody else have anything else that they, you want to discuss? Or? And. Want to entertain a motion on this application?
I'll make a motion to approve application PZ twenty twenty-two dash twenty-five. Twenty-eight Abbey Road. Site plan modification for installation of soccer field.
One second. This is application number four. I, I give it to that title, forty twenty-three.
Oh, um.
The actual quarter.
Thank you. So I'll make a motion to approve application PZ twenty.
Twenty-three.
Twenty-three. Dash four. For twenty-eight Abbey Road. Site plan modification for installation of soccer field lighting. The applicant and owner is the town of East Windsor. The approval is granted subject to the conformance to reference plans. As may be modified by the commission and this approval and the following conditions and modifications. The plans and conditions one through twelve. Are included in a memo to the commission. From Ruth Ann Calabresi, the director of planning and development dated three twenty-three, twenty twenty-three.
Yeah, we have a motion on the table. Is there a second?
Second.
Right there. Any other further discussions? And call for a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous. When I hear a food. Next application. Will be PZ twenty twenty-three dash six. One oh two Winkler Road and Newberry Road for site plan modification for construction of a gravel storage lot yard. The applicant is BT Properties LLC.
Uh once again, for the record, JR Street, JR Russo and Associates here representing. BB Landscaping and BP uh Properties. Ralph Thomas is also here. He's a partner in BB um. So this is an application for a site plan modification. Uh you approved BB's project. Fifteen years ago, Ralph? Twelve years ago?
Two thousand six, maybe?
Two thousand and six, so it's been a while. Um. Their main facility, as you know, is located on, on Winkler Road. The building is up front in the left corner of Winkler. They've got some storage area up in the front over to the corner. Of Newberry and they own thirty. Six acres, I believe it is. It's a fairly large parcel that runs way out to the west over here. Behind where Scorpion Fasteners goes and beyond. All the way over to, I believe, what is now the IBEW piece that comes up to the front. So it's a large piece of land. Has a, a wetland and a water course that. Starts up in here and continues on down through into a brook and runs all the way down to the end and eventually gets into the brook that goes. Under uh Thompson. Finds its way out and eventually down under Route five uh down by the, over the bed building, I think. I can't remember the name of the brook. I've forgotten. Finds its way into. The Connecticut River, but. At any rate. The modification involves a gravel storage area for some of their equipment, so. Uh BB is obviously seasonal in terms of what they do. Uh summertime, obviously, they've got. Lawn maintenance, grounds maintenance, landscaping, you know, they've got equipment for that. Winter time, we've got snow removal equipment and ice equipment and snow blowers and all of that stuff. And they've got all of that. They need a place to store it. Winter time, where do we put all of this grass and landscape equipment and grounds maintenance and vice versa? So. They've actually been looking around because I've been involved with Ralph and looking at other properties where they could build something else and that's kind of hard to find. So. They've got a little bit of land over here where it's gonna help them and it's over in this corner. I highlighted it here in yellow. And it's. Front's on Newberry. It's kind of the, I guess I call it s- northwesterly corner. Scott Cota is here with an application that you're gonna hear next. He's located right next door. He's the neighbor. You've got Morning Duck Trail that comes into Newberry Village that's located right here. So. Let me flip this over. And go to a plan that's a little bit different scale, so we can look at some of the details. Here. So. Now we're located on Newberry Road. This is the parcel we're talking about. Scott Cota's over here. Driveway into Newberry Village is right here. And what we're proposing is a gravel storage area that would be located in here. It's just about a half an acre in size. It's not that large. Uh but it'll be a big help to them to be able to bring their equipment in. And when I say equipment, um you know, snow plows, probably in the summertime, that type of stuff would be in here. In the opposite season, winter time, some of their grounds and lawn maintenance stuff, which would be locked in trailers, would also be located in here. It's fully fenced. And it's gated up here in the front. The driveway's here. And we've actually got a berm. In this area. Up in the front. So that this isn't visible from the street. And if you remember. When we did, some of you were here, certainly when we did BB originally. The properties across the street are zoned residential. So we've got Newberry Residential. When we were over on Winkler, you have the houses across the street that is zoned residential. And there's a buffer requirement. So in order to satisfy the buffer requirement, in this case, we're locating a berm up here in the front. We've got white spruce plantings on the berm, some more over here, a couple over here in the corner. So there's no visibility from the street coming in here. The only visibility is right here. At the gate where the driveway comes in, we'd be able to come in. And. Be honest, originally, and, and we've sat with staff on this a couple of times and talked about it. We originally thought it made more sense to put this driveway opposite the driveway into Newberry Village because it would be kind of a, you know, four-way intersection. And. And what we found was is that some of the folks in Newberry Village are a little concerned about the commercial growth that's going on over here. Uh in the industrial park area on the opposite side of the road. And. Had we put the driveway here, when they come down to the stop sign and get ready to exit, they'd be looking right in the driveway and they'd be able to see it. So we thought. Well, maybe that's not such a great idea. So we moved it as far to the east as we could, stuck it over in this corner. Stended the berm across, so now there's no visibility. When they come out of their street, they're gonna be looking at landscaping and a berm that's right in front of them instead of. In the driveway access. And getting into here, so they've got visibility of, of the equipment that's stored in here. Uh there's no proposed lighting at all. Uh strictly a storage yard, long-term storage. The drainage is essentially sheet flow from. Northern side here southerly. This way southerly and easterly into a swell. We've got a drainage basin that's located out here, takes care of with a four bay, takes care of treatment. And storage and an outlet here that gets into the little water course and in the well and then finds its, finds its way out through. Their property. So there's zero, zero increase in runoff, takes care of the treatment. Lenny's reviewed the, the design and the calculations. He agrees with them. Uh we only had a couple of minor comments. One was on a detail that revision has been made. And I don't, I don't know that there was anything else. I think Lenny is comfortable at this point in time in terms of what's. Happening here. So that's a basic overview. Happening here. So that's a basic overview of what they'd like to do and if there's anything more specific in terms of the operation question, certainly Ralph. Ralph can answer those. He's much more familiar with their operation than I am, so. Any questions? Entirely entirely fenced. Chain with fence for security. Yeah. They actually have had some security issues over the years uh. Over at the main site. And those of you who have been by there will see that it's it is lit at night, but it's. It's not fenced. It's gated, you know, so people, you know, you can't get a piece of a truck or a trailer in there, but but they have had some issues with people. Walking in, breaking into trailers and stealing equipment.
Dave, you have any questions? Uh, no, I do not.
Driving by the, I'll say, main site on Winkler. The property looks really nice and well maintained. Um. I like the idea of the buffer. And um the berm, so people aren't looking at this. And can't see it. I wonder about the driveway coming in not being paved. I I get the parking area not being paved. But I wonder how.
The apron is paved.
Oh, it is.
That's required, yeah. So there is a pavement and then it turns to gravel. And and I guess.
I guess uh my experience with um.
Yeah, it kicks out into the street eventually, yeah.
And it guts, so it doesn't hold up very well.
I I guess let me say this and and Ralph can chime in if he if he would like, is that. Because of the nature of their business, being landscape contractors, whatever they do here is is always going to look nice. It's going to be well maintained. It's going to have nice landscaping because if it doesn't, it's like, yeah, why would I hire those guys? They can't even take care of their own place. They're not going to take care of mine, but. But having known them now for fifteen years or more and and seeing them around the area around town, I. I guess I could barely say that they they do a pretty nice job. Uh, in in what they do and and they're. They're uh after talking to Ralph over the last year or so with this project, they're. They're certainly uh. Environmentally friendly. They're they're the only landscapers I know, and I'm just going to throw this in and Ralph can elaborate if he wants to. They've gone to electric equipment, sold their equipment, which, you know, you have seen as homeowners, but we're talking about commercial grade. Mowers that are electric, so there's no, you know, not the noise of the gasoline engine that you're used to and. I didn't know they had such a thing, but they do and they're headed in that direction and. So, uh, you know, I think they're a great asset that obviously starting and have that for the whole. Area in the community that they do a lot of work in, so they're going to see.
No, I just uh. Driving up to the community garden, that is. The millings and it gets gutted really quick, like it does not hold up. But they'll, I would guess. Given their business, they will make sure it looks good and doesn't tack into the street.
No, I'm just glad anyone to drive by.
Yeah, we didn't realize that. You know, the neighbors had the concern that they did, but they've expressed that concern and so we decided that it was best of it. Yeah, it's good to me.
Thank you.
Plus, it's a lot drier at that.
Yes, maybe, yeah.
So, Jayden, this is not going to be a daily drive-in and outlaw. This is this is switching me. This is twice a year.
Summer to winter.
It's about the Bailey Trailer Crew going in and out. All that's going to stay down.
That driving will be paid, didn't I assume?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, so I can't really see that it's going to be. Causing a traffic issue or anything like that, fixing. Seasonal switchovers when they're moving equipment back. Staff have any questions, Pam, or anything? Nobody has anything further to add? I'll entertain a motion on this.
I'll make a motion to approve application. Easy twenty twenty-three dash six. A site plan modification for construction of a gravel surface storage yard. The applicant slash owner is B T Properties. L L B N C, B B Landscaping Service. The approval is granted subject. To the conformance with reference plans, as may be modified by the commission and this approval. And uh, conditions and modifications. Listed in a memo. To the commission. From Ruth Ann Calabresi, Director of Planning and Development, dated March twenty-third twenty twenty-three. With. Uh, indication of the reference plans and eleven conditions.
We have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Remember, call for a vote. All those in favor say aye. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Excuse me, Mike, was your second Frank or David? Thank you.
Next item is. Application easy twenty twenty-three dash seven for one twenty-four Newberry Road for site plan modification for. Specifying millings and gravel area on plans and parking and driving.
So, Mr. Chairman, I'm going to repeat myself in this application since my company has to work. On this project.
Okay. There is accusing himself. Was here to speak on this application.
I didn't think so. No, I didn't know I had to speak. We're just looking to change the pavement to the milling, that's all. We have a lot of heavy equipment that runs around there, so running with heavy equipment, the pavement is just going to get destroyed. So we'll be fixing it all the time. So the milling is teacher maintaining and fills.
Excuse me, Mike, who's speaking? Thank you.
Alright, so I recall when you originally came before us, this was going to be a kind of a rent-a-bay type building, so. The use is now changed on what you plan on doing with the.
No, it's always been a construction shop with some rental layers.
Okay, and that that's staying the same? So as far as the other tenants that are in there. Um, what other type of business?
We don't have anybody else in there right now.
Just curious if there's going to be a requirement, any other activities that. Would benefit more from a from a hard paved surface than a than a compacted milling surface. Um. If we're going to have uh customers, uh, that we need striped bays, that parking, does it need parking spots, things like that?
What are you going to be paying the stripes?
Right.
How often is it going to get? Lots are much less reliable surface.
Cause your your plan showed striping, so how are you planning on striping on top of millings?
I mean, I can, but or we can just get rid of the striping altogether, but.
Well, I mean. How how this normally works is you submit us a plan of how you plan to operate your facility and that's what we approve, so. Um. From from what we originally submitted. To, I guess this is now your new proposed plan?
I don't know.
You submitted your.
What?
You submitted your asphalt plan? That showed the.
Oh, we could change it from by tumors to no.
Okay, so that's the only change than everything else that was on the original plan. The uh. The. Stone water treatment basin, the the landscape. Landscaping, the dumpster pad, the fencing, screening, all that stuff is still in the in the in the plan? Yeah. Okay.
And the plan still shows parking spaces.
Right. And handicap spaces designations?
As long as it's going to stay sprayed. With millings, it don't heat up till August. And you're going to lose track of where everybody parks.
So in the other conversation. Jim said that her first album and he beat at apron had to be paid.
It is already.
One of the other modifications that you made on a staff level is to. Um. If you still choose to, it's about the same cost differential, um, replace the fence or substitute the fence with the same. Type of berm that. We saw with the the landscape.
But my concern is. I I think it's a great idea. I think the millings, I wish I'd do more of that around town personally as childrens, but. My concern is if a person come go, uh, somebody comes in with a plan. To put down by two minutes. And they say, well, look. I can do this with millions. It's cheaper. And according to the town engineer and the planning and zoning commission has done this before. All apply. And if we say no, they're going to say, geez, you did it for quota. How come you're not doing it for us? Not that not that I don't think it's. It's right to do, except what you're doing is you're setting a precedent where everybody in their right mind will go from by two minutes to this because it's going to save them. Tons of money.
And didn't you come in originally with the permit saying it was going to be by two minutes? We did, okay.
But on the other hand, if they come before us saying they want to put buildings in, then we can have the discretion of saying no, I suppose, so. So I don't know. It's just. But I I think it's a great idea, right? I agree with you. I agree with the whole concept. But I'm concerned about the the concept of.
I'm concerned about it for the town too because. As a driver of a car, not construction equipment, I don't find it holds up, but. Gets full of holes and when you have a load clearance cars, so I would hate to see it in Walmart's parking lot or in a grocery store.
Well, our our ranks presently say it has to see by two, so now we're making an exception, really. So. That's the problem. The problem is, are we setting a precedent for anybody to come in? And legally, I think a a good lawyer could put up a pretty good argument, well, you did it for this guy. How come you're not doing it for us?
Set a precedent that says you can come in with an original plan that says I'm. By two minutes and now when I get to the end, you have a C O already, correct?
No.
No, so everything that's stored there is just stored there? You don't do any work on it there?
No, we're just still trying to finish getting our C O. We're having, you know, do the site work, finish all the stuff up. I mean, we got the pond done and all the erosion control and stuff. But we're still waiting to get our C O.
So trucks that run in and out are just remotely. Parked there. Equipment's just, no, nobody's running in and out every day?
No, the electricians have been there, the sheetrockers have been there, the plumbers are there, the heat guy is there.
I I have a question maybe for our planning, our planner. Is there something we can do or do we have to? Make a new, write a new ordinance or what do we have, not an ordinance, but a new tax amendment or what do we have to do?
We're already in the office. We're already talking um. Kind of on a lessons learned, like you need to tighten up on the regulations because we're not adequately defined. Paving other than an all, an all-weather surface. And so that leaves it up to the commission to decide what does that mean? And the applicant has provided an opinion from Tim Kuhn and then Len. Um. Reviewed that and confirms with Tim that it's an adequate substitute. Um. I think going forward, we'd be looking for limiting the use. I mean, to.
You know, especially use permit, we got a little latitude, but this is just a regular, you know, and.
If it's a site plan that comes in and within the determination today is that asphalt milling is the same as by two minutes concrete. For a site plan. Um, you wouldn't have the leeway to say no. If they met that standard, so. We'll have to um tighten up our definitions and what. We'd like to see in commercial areas.
So how does that, how does that affect this particular project? If we're going to tighten it up, what does that mean? That means if someone comes in. Later on, after we've tightened it up, we can say no, or they don't even ask?
Or it. Maybe it's only in a special use permit. Situation that you're given that leeway or an um an M-one zone. Industrial use, not not so much a commercial customer facing.
I mean, I'm all all favored, to be honest with you, all favored this going through, except that, as you know, I said a hundred times already, just concerned about the future.
Right. Um. And that's, we've had the same conversation in the office. We agree with. Every, the opinions you've stated here. Um. One thing I just wanted to caution is. I think the. Appropriate way to address the request is to make a decision one way or the other, whether the millings can be used. Based on the information provided by the engineers and. But recognizing that impact, we just said. We don't want to see it everywhere, so we need to change our regulations. But I would do that outside of a site plan modification. Because of um. The need for wetlands. Play in on it and um.
But just. You see the.
It's very discreet. It's a very discreet request. It's not a full-blown site plan on, which I know that Mr. Cota is hoping to.
It it'd be very difficult. Uh, it'd be difficult to deny because all our professional people are engineer, are town engineer. And and say it's 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 as good or better. So we have to deny it based upon it didn't meet the regulations.
Well, no, what Ruth Ann is saying is that if. Truly we look at this as a site plan modification, it has to go back to wetlands for their review. Which hasn't occurred. So. What you were talking about here about just allowing the substitution. So.
So, yes, and that can happen in two ways. You could. Withdraw. Or the commission could just simply. Deny without prejudice and then under a second motion.
Allow us a a simple substitution.
I I think perhaps. Jay has some experience in this, if you may say something.
Yes.
Once again, I understand it's not a public hearing, but if I could just make a comment and. Uh, preface it by saying I'm not here representing Scott Burrows at this point, but for anybody across the street. But we've run into this in other towns, uh, a similar situation, you know, where they did allow them to use. Uh. Essentially, the two minutes millings because millings is the two minutes concrete, so we're kind of throwing words around here that are. Um, on a a little different here and. And I think what what Ruth Ann just pointed out, and I'm not sure if anybody caught it, is that your regulation doesn't say. That you have to use what we would call the two minutes hot mix and that's what we're used to seeing. You see the steam coming out of the truck and they're rolling it. That's the two minutes concrete hot mix. Your regulations don't say that. Your zoning regulations say that you're required to put down an all-weather durable surface. And and what. My partner, Tim Kuhn, has said in his letter, and I think Lenny agrees, is that. The two minutes millings is an all-weather durable surface and and in our, in our estimation is. Pretty much equivalent to a bituminous roll hot mix. Well, it's infervious, um, it's really not a whole lot different. It looks different.
Uh, on the application, he he specified he wants millings and gravel areas.
Okay, I don't know. I don't know about the gravel, but I'm just. I guess I'm just trying to clarify some things. It's what the regulations say.
You're saying. The millings are the two minutes.
The two minutes is milling. It's ground up pavement. It's like you have here in your driveway, which is the two minutes hot mix when it was put down.
They put them down and they steamroll.
They and they steamroll and then now we've started recycling. They, and they steamroll them and now we've started recycling years ago. We just threw stuff away and buried it in a landfill.
So when you steamroll it, does it melt back and become a hard surface?
Now, here's, here's, here's the thing, and I'll, I'll just give you some of my experiences that. If you get the two minutes Millings, and I think somebody, it might have been Dave that said it. And you get it in August when it's coming up off the highway and you bring it to your site immediately and lay it out and roll it and it's eighty five or ninety degrees out. You might not be able to tell whether it was the two minutes hot mix out of the plant or whether it's Millings, because it looks pretty darn nice. Right now, probably what Scott has put down over there, and I don't know, I'm just speculating, was something that went down during the colder months. Now, I would guess because of the business that Scott's in, come this August, when it's still there and it gets hot out, he's probably gonna roll it. And it's gonna look pretty good because when it gets heated up.
With a steamroller.
With a roller, it's gonna get a little soft and when he rolls it. Well, yes. It, it could.
The sun, the sun bakes it in.
It can look pretty good, um, but the glitch that's here in East Windsor is that your regulations don't say that you have the two minutes hot mix. The two minutes hot mix concrete, and that's what we're all used to seeing, and it doesn't say that.
But, but the specs for the, for the, on the approved plan.
Does.
And so that.
So there's, there's your.
Plans say that.
Right.
Asphalt chips.
Why are you answering? He is my brother. Okay.
I'm asking a factual question. I trust you will answer factually. The. Stuff you put on the dirt road going to the community garden, is that the same stuff we're talking?
No. Um, have you been out on East Road? Now, Mr. Gowdy, it's mad at me every other week on Peace Road, but on East Road, we actually remilled one year. And brought it right out there and steamrolled it. And there's parts of East Road we never had to touch. I can tell you this too. You go to my house, I've been building a garage, I put it in my driveway three years ago. It is like concrete.
Okay, so it's not the, what I dislike.
That's all process and. We've been working with Melissa to pave aprons on both of those anyways, because it's terrible.
It is terrible. And so when I, that's what I was envisioning when we were talking.
Alright, so I mean, I think we're kind of much in agreement that substitution is really not the issue, the procedural.
Right.
Part of it is the issue of how to do this without setting a precedent.
Right.
Um, and if I understand Ruth Ann correctly, then. That has she spelled it out here in the, in the memo is. Deny it as a site plan application, uh, site plan modification, but approve it as a substitution. You understand? So if you look at, if you look at your memo, there's two separate.
Second.
Right on the first, on the front page.
Okay.
So that will at least keep us correct procedurally. That we're not approving the whole site plan modification. We're just, we're just approving a. Substitution of materials, but all of the other aspects of the original site.
And we have another modification that's gonna be coming out once we get through some other stuff, because we have to do that for the other parcel next door for parking all the equipment and stuff. So that's all gonna be incorporated into one modification.
So. But what's before us today is strictly more of a substitution.
The substitute.
Everybody in agreement, understand?
Yes.
That's what it's called.
Right. By two minutes concrete is, is pavement, but that's the same as, no, it's just major ground up by two minutes.
And is, look, if you still have questions?
Two minutes concrete just doesn't make sense to me. Means different than by two minutes material.
That's the technical name for it, yeah. You think of asphalt, but the technical name is gravel, but I do it in concrete.
I just worry about the lawyers, these lawyers, they still lawyer.
So would you like?
Yeah, so if anybody's, anybody's good, we're good, everybody understand?
Yes. I'm fine.
Okay, then.
Okay, I will make a motion to deny application P Z twenty twenty three dash seven. For a site plan modification for one twenty four Newbury Road. And instead render a decision regarding asphalt knowing substitution under a separate action.
Okay, we have a motion to deny. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Dave. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye, aye.
Okay, so the application has been denied.
Now we hear another motion, motion to allow. For substitution of asphalt Millings in place of by two minutes concrete. As detailed on the site plan approved as part of application P Z. Twenty twenty one dash oh nine. All other conditions of approval and site improvements detailed on the plan set incorporated into that. April sixteenth, twenty twenty one approval remain in full effect.
Okay, there's a motion for a substitution. We have a second.
Second.
Second by Dave. Any other discussions? Hearing none, I'll call for vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That is unanimous. The proof and substance. Alright, uh. Under other business, the first item was withdrawn for the informal discussion. Uh, so we are going to move on to item B, affordable housing plan, consideration of adoption.
So we had a review of our, kind of the final draft version of the affordable housing plan. Um, maybe a month or so ago, and so. We're thinking about the process by which we make sure we include the public in the adoption, the formal adoption. And so Mike and I were talking and we're thinking that, um. You know, public hearing isn't necessary, but maybe a, a. Kind of a listening session, we would post the final plan on the website and put it on the agenda, invite, inviting folks to come.
Didn't you say that would be part of one of our regular meetings or?
Yeah.
Okay, so not, not a special meeting.
Not a special meeting, yeah.
Agenda item.
Maybe have it on the, on the agenda for a couple of meetings.
Okay.
Uh, prior to. So, so folks have concerns, questions or, um, ideas, they could have the opportunity to voice that.
What would we cover that under? Uh, because it's not technically public participation because we're. It is an agenda item, so how would we not call it a public hearing, but it's.
Uh, will we find the, the same thing with Len's? I walk project?
You know.
Right.
Okay. So if you figure out the terminology, what do you call it, you know, public discussion?
Public information session, we've called them, listening session, we refer to them as, um. There's no, it's not like a, an appealable decision that the commission's making, so. You, you, you're not running a risk of creating an N F O I issue if you take input from members of the public.
Okay.
Um, and I actually, um, so that stuff is, it's on the, it's on the website. It was.
You did post it.
Yeah, so the, the, the survey is there, the survey results are there, the. Presentation that was made with sort of the data, the demographics of East Windsor and sort of all the. Information that went into it and then the draft planner on the planning and development page. With a web form, so people can basically, so. Just open it up, it's very basic information. They can submit their comments, which will come to you. So that can be, I didn't do anything with it other than post it there. We can check it otherwise, but. So that, that can be shared around and people can read it at their leisure. Sort of can go either way. People get really interested in it and have lots of comments. Or totally uninterested.
I would suggest put together some kind of a handout and. If, if there's anybody.
Yeah, they could come and, and take them after.
Yeah, we'll do that. I did kind of have, I have a little introductory statement that explains the statute and why we're endeavoring to go through the process. And kind of set the table for what it is, and then the PowerPoints themselves actually do kind of lay it out a little bit. More clearly as well, so all that information is there, people can do it and.
And then we would review the PowerPoints at the meeting and just.
You, it's the PowerPoints you've seen.
Right.
Yeah.
In the, in the public. The first time.
I wonder if we should do like a voiceover one, if they could just click on.
Like a screen record or something? We could.
Because that's, that's helpful too, that any, anyone, anytime you want to, just.
I could probably splice the recording that John made here.
Yeah.
Put the screen share of the presentation, people could watch.
I like that idea.
It's one of those things, people aren't, especially in a town that already has ten percent affordable housing, the threat is not the same as it is elsewhere.
Well, there's a big threat at the, uh, Otter.
Oh, boy.
Because. Speaking out against it.
Yeah, because a hundred and fifty towns in Connecticut don't have ten percent, so that they have folk and. And in many areas of the state, this is exactly the mechanism that they use to get, they, they commit with the eight dash thirty Gs all the time. Because the market is so strong in some towns that this is the only way to really make it happen, because towns don't want.
Fairview County was all down there. They had like four people lined up, boom, 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 they were just blasting the sky.
But even towns is, I mean, I guess the closest I can think of is Woodbury, and they were in the news. They only allow some. That's it. That's all you got. It's not in the regs. It's not a special permit. It's not, that's all they have.
Not my town.
Yeah, so, you know, they, these, this is an extremely polarizing topic in most places because it's seen as this significant threat.
It does. We're like, okay, we gotta.
Right, and the other, and the towns that have it, it, yeah, it's, it's, it's enough. It was, it was put across as government overreach.
Yeah.
Yes. That's how, and with the requirement of the eight dash thirty J affordable housing plan, having to make the plan. Make the non-binding, completely discretionary plan.
The speaker like, is there anybody who wants to speak?
This group of, yeah, they have a name for it. They must have an organized group. The, the coalition, the big.
Strong, Connecticut's strong town.
Maybe something.
That's from down that way.
Yeah.
Okay, so are we ready at the next meeting or what, what's the timeframe on this? When, when you wanna?
I can think so, yeah.
Yeah, we can talk about how to make it more, you know, how to just. Get out to folks that it's here, so we send comments.
Maybe more time to let it set up about science. I think you have way you all monitor and how many bricks you're getting on it or anything like that.
We can't monitor traffic. Um, I suppose if I post, depending on how we do it, if we posted a new version of the. Video, if I slice it, we posted that again on YouTube, we can track views of the video. Um, we can't track, and for the, for the form, I'm trying. It just has name, name, address, email, comments, and the only thing it's actually gonna require them to provide are. The, uh, the name and the comments. You don't have to provide an address, they don't have to provide an email address. We can toggle that on and off if you don't want their name, but we need to know.
Who's sending it? Yeah, I think that's.
Yeah, I would just say, you know, look at what our upcoming schedule is and try to plan around a night that's not heavily related with other things, you know. Or, or we can put it at the beginning of the meeting, so people won't have to sit through the time, meaning they don't want to think about it.
We probably have preview.
Well, I mean, probably.
Yeah, and we can. Yeah, like you said, kind of push it out so there's some time for people to potentially submit comments, whether we get them or we don't. People that, I mean, the, the people that are interested will probably say, I already participated in the survey, right? They already have my comments. So.
Any need for public noticing outside of, uh?
About due process.
Okay. Alright, under correspondence, we have a Prague notification email.
So there's just a series of, of, um. Regulations being proposed by families around us, really, um. Pretty general, I didn't see anything that. Struck me as. Of concern, yeah. I was just curious on the Palmone. Planning and zoning commission. They have a setback requirement for farm brewery, ciderry, distillery and winery uses. Which begs the question for me, did we have adequate setback for? An event center type proposal? In our regulation, so I was wondering what they chose as a setback.
Seventy five. I work at Tom. Seventy five.
Okay.
That is the way that the regs are written there. Most of their town is, is R D D residential, so these farm. Vineyards and stuff are gonna be exclusively in a residential zone. And the setback was something significantly. Larger, I think two hundred. Um, and so they're reducing it to provide for sort of reuse of an existing site. Um. But it's going to seventy five, which is consistent with some other separating distances they have elsewhere in the regs.
Less than ours.
Yeah.
Yeah, we had the public hearing last night, no one.
But it does beg that question. What story is, what story distance and there's a hundred feet enough?
Yeah, I mean, depending on.
Not.
Right.
Right, for big events.
Although this doesn't, this doesn't really kind of speak of an event, it's brewery, ciderry, distillery, so.
Well, it's the same, it would cause the same. Rock is that is of concern, right? I guess it would depend on scale.
This is a, yeah, very small.
Use itself is not the issue. It's then accessory uses that go along.
Yeah.
The live, the live music, the, the other, the food, drugs, the videos that goes along with it, yes, other uses.
This is an existing farm. They have a, they have a small brew house that they've established and a very small tasting room. That's maybe the size of this firm. And so the issue they came into is now without the COVID outdoor dining stuff, because of where the barn that they're doing it in is located. It's within two hundred feet of a property line, so that's where this comes into play. So it just, yeah, the idea of, yeah, right now I think they have like four tables or something. But, um, it's not gonna facilitate any other stuff at the time as far as like events or anything like that. This is, um, just a small tasting room. They may have some grapes, I'm not sure.
Okay, so that leads us to our executive session. So we're going to. Officially enter into executive session at seven thirty eight P M.